Good evening. My call is Tuesday, March 1st, 2016. Meeting in Middletown City Council to order. Please stand and join me in a moment of meditation and the pledge of allegiance apply. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we get started with our agenda, I would like to offer my condolences and thoughts in terms of the tragedy that happened over in Madison School District yesterday certainly affected all of us. Fortunately, there's no loss of life, but certainly an incident that will all be affected by for many days here to come. And with that, Ms. Kent, can we have a roll, please?
Ms. Bronston here. Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here. All right, I've received notice and comment cards this evening, so we can move to Mr. Atkins and the city manager reports.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, Council. I have three items this evening I'd like to share. The first one is kind of breaking news simply because it has popped up on our radar. There have been a number of unconfirmed reports on social media that the events at Madison High School were connected to the incident that happened at Middletown High School yesterday. I can tell you definitively that both the sheriff's office and Middletown Police have investigated that, and there is no connection between the two incidents at the two different high schools. It was starting to get legs and go in the media. We have issued a press release shortly after 5:00, making it clear that there was no connection, and I wanted to make sure that we announce that here as well. Second item, Your Honor, we're pleased to have John Granville from the Butler Metro Parks here this evening to talk about the new river center coming to Middletown. John?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I actually have the pleasure of updating you on a little bit of what's going on with the metro parks across the county and in particular nearby Middletown and inside Middletown. And then we'll talk a little bit quickly about how we do it and what some of the plans are for the future. So, Metro Parks is a large green space provider. In fact, the Ohio Revised Code says we are a separate political subdivision to the state of Ohio that has a conservation mission. And in that regard, we have our mission statement, Conservation, Education, and Recreation. That's what happens in the metro parks, and we like to facilitate that in any other place we can, because we're all in this together. A rising tide floats all boats. Why is conservation of natural resources and natural green space important? Well, here's a land use map of the county. The pink and red spots are growth areas. Growth is great, but people still need places of significant green space to get out, relax, recreate, and just enjoy family activities and programming. Metro Parks, as I said, is primarily interested in natural landscapes, large green spaces. In fact, these are excerpts from the operating parameters statement that our board has recently refined. We try to concentrate now on at least 100-acre parcels in one place. Now, there are some significant historical or special locations where 100 acres, we may take on projects on properties of less than 100 acres. But we primarily try to work in the sense of hundreds of acres in one place because of that conservation mission. That's a little bit different than city parks. Metro parks or park districts in Ohio, and there are about 50 of them that are organized under roughly county boundaries. Metro parks and city parks complement one another, but typically city parks are smaller. Not always, but typically more active and not so much green space. We recently added a goal for the Board of Park Commissioners and the metro parks in general, and that is to make sure that in the future, we will have every resident of this county within at least 15 miles of driving time of a metro park or a metro park-supported or related facility. Now, I think actually unless you live way out in the corners of the county, you are probably pretty close to that right now. And this is... There it went.
Not going to work.
Well, I'm not as much exciting as the video we were going to show you, but we've been having technical difficulties with that. Nadine has been struggling with it, and my staff have been struggling with it. Oh, here it is.
There it is.
This is pretty much what it's all about when it comes to parks, people, and why we do these things. All along.
Metro Parks of Butler County. How that's family fun.
10 points to anyone who can name the most unusual sport you saw in that video.
Cricket.
Quidditch!
Quidditch.
Quidditch!
Cricket, close!
Actually, it's mutated baseball. Oh, wait a minute, they tell us the other way around. Baseball is a...I think cricket's been around longer. But cricket, and we also had hosted a quidditch match. As in Harry Potter?
Sure.
Actually, organized teams. No, they don't get off the ground, but they do run around with sticks between their legs, and it's a vicious game. College kids, what are you going to say? We didn't do that back in the '70s when I was in school. But what else do we do with the metro parks? Well, we have a positive economic impact like all well-run park systems do. Your city parks do. As you know, you've had major special events right here in town that generated an awful lot of economic impact. In the case of the metro parks, many of our...well, just last year, our economic impact was measured at, for special events and athletic tournaments, of about a little more than $13 million. So, the dollars are out there, and a park system ought to do more than just give you green space and a place to recreate. It ought to also be about economic prosperity, and anyone who doesn't get at least some of that impact beyond their own community benefits is missing the boat. I'm happy to say that you folks are. Tourism, a lot of people come into town to use various park facilities, and I think I'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about the Great Miami River Recreation Path. Go ahead. Some other things that you saw in the video, camping, all the things, sledding. It's been a winner of surprises so far. I think there's only been one decent day to do any sledding at all, but there are other blessings, too. How much money are we all saving on not having to plow snow and salt on our roadways? And my car isn't going to rust as fast either. So, what we are primarily interested in the metro parks because of our mission in the Revised Code and about the impacts to natural resources and green space, and we find that from our polling, the public is to...green space where you can see wildlife, green space where you can just get some peace and quiet, has a major impact on people. And if you lived in a community where you could get none of that, you would want to look the next time you were thinking of moving to find a place where you could get more. So, the metro parks itself started in 1955, but really didn't get going until we got support from our customer owners, as we like to call the taxpayers of Butler County. And we do a lot with partnerships. That's leveraged a lot of dollars in now from essentially less than 700 acres back in 55, actually '75. We're now managing over 4,500 acres scattered across the county, but some of it close There are all the places in the county in various colors that the metro parks either owns or manages in some fashion. Not every one of them is open on a daily basis, but at least all our properties are open, at least on a scheduled basis for scheduled programming and reservations. But most, 10, have units open all the time during daylight hours. So, where are we? Well, there's Middletown on that block, and that's a five-minute drive at 35 miles an hour. What else is nearby? 10-minute drive or less at 35. That's the zone, and you see you're encompassing more and more of that green space. Our 15-minute goal for everybody, we're going to have to...I think we're getting a lot of folks from this area inside that 15-minute drive. And then 20 minutes, you've got this entire corner of the county and all the resources. Of course, we could spill over into the county to the north, but that shall be remained nameless, at least in my presentation. Although, I have to admit, we can learn an awful lot from our park district, our metro park district to the north, Five Rivers Metro Parks. And in fact, we attend the many training programs and state association meetings that in park districts, there aren't that many of us, and we learn from one another often. We get a lot from our county to the south, great parts of Hamilton County, too. Although each park district has its own emphasis based on what its customer owners want, and we have flexibility to do what they want and tell us they need. The Great Miami River Trail, right here, nine-mile segment that runs through Middletown, out the south and to the north. Metro Parks has managed that for slightly over three years, and we hope that we will see more and more users on that trail. It's a great public investment. We think it's been underutilized for lack of parking or drinking water and restrooms. So, we've got a solution to that. How many hours has the metro park staff spent on just that nine miles in the last three years? About 4,000, a little more than 4,000 hours. And I don't think we've captured all of it because there's a lot going on that we don't remember to record. But within the city limits, what have we been doing along that bike trail? Here's a list of projects. I can't say that we've organized all of them, but we were happy to participate in every one of those events or activities. And we have a project right there, Community Garden at the community center right here in Middletown with CBI and some other partners, hoping to rev that up a little more than last year. This will be the third year the metro parks has been involved in managing that property, and we're just hoping to get a few more dollars from outside sources to rev that whole thing up and get more people participating. And then, I think this is the most exciting one. We were able, with the help of Senator Bill Coley, to secure just slightly under $1 million of state capital grant money to build a solution to some of the reasons people underutilize that Great Miami Recreation Trail. What are those reasons? Parking's an issue, but a place to cool off in the summertime, a place to get a drink of water, a place to use a restroom, or a place to tie up your bike, lock it up, and walk to nearby places like downtown Middletown, where you might want to spend some time and some dollars enjoying yourself with the resurgence of downtown and nearby areas. What will it look like? Well, nice artist renditions. I think we're going to see that groundbreaking happen this fall. We've had some title issues that compounded by the fact that the river has moved a half mile since 1916. Spent almost two years trying to figure out who owned what, where, and how. And now, we've got it straightened out and have a deal with Miami Conservancy District who actually acquired the land, which the state grant requires, that we have control of, and you will see that building start soon. I hope you'll all come to the ribbon cutting. I'm pretty sure I can probably ensure you'll get an invitation. What has it got in it? Well, I mentioned restrooms. There'll also be a small meeting room, and there will be a place for our law enforcement patrol people to at least seasonally patrol the parks and the trail primarily. We're also going to base a volunteer program, a volunteer trail ambassador program at that site. Now, when it comes to park systems, if you want to get the most out of your park system, whatever park it is, whether it's a park district, metro park, city park, or whatever, there are three major components. One, maintenance. Everybody worries sometimes about how do we build it, but the real problem is how do you maintain it? How do you maintain it to a standard that somebody wants to use it and come visit? Second, you're not getting all the money's worth if you're not programming, giving people a reason to visit. Is it an educational program? Is it a learn-to-play-quidditch program? Whatever it is, programming it and promoting those programs is a vital important part of an active and productive park system. And the third thing, and this sort of resonates lately, is safety. If your parks aren't safe, no one will want to go. It doesn't matter how nice they are. So, we have a dedicated law enforcement staff that augments city personnel and other staff and state and county agencies, and we work very closely with them. Right now, the Metro Parks Ranger Division, although we've changed recently their name to the Division of Public Safety and Law Enforcement. Ranger sometimes includes a speaking...was that the guy at the golf course tells you what your name is? Our ranger staff, I should say, law, the public safety staff, our certified P.O. H.O.P. officers, and we have three full-time and about five part-time positions. So, we're serious about making sure that wherever we can, you will not only have a clean park, and you will have a park that has some programming, but you will have a safe park wherever we can possibly arrange it. And more excitement, I mentioned the volunteer ambassador trail program kicking off this fall. We will start it right here. Whether or not that building is done, we're going to have...we'll be recruiting volunteers to help people on the trail. Every active bike trail, very active bike trail in the state and the nation, has a core of volunteers trained to deal with people riding up and down the trail. Some trail systems have a golf cart or a utility vehicle. People sometimes fight over actually getting trained. At Cuyahoga National Park, they have a very, very active bike trail, and they have to limit the number of people they train through their trail patrol program to 80 a year, and it's usually cutting off another 80 people who want to get trained. What do they do? Well, it's our law enforcement, quite as a set of eyes for someone to report a problem. You come across a flat tire on someone who's two miles from parking lot where they left their car, you can help them out, fix that tire, or in some cases, give them an actual ride or call someone who can give them a ride back to that car park in that parking lot. And I'll tell you what, I don't know how many of you are bikers, but I can tell you that when I ride a bike trail, I always find that the wind is behind me on the way away from the car, but blowing in my face, and it's twice as hard. It's uphill, which is one way, all the way back to the car. So, sometimes it's just fatigue that causes families with little kids can't make it back to the car in a reasonable amount of time. So, that trail ambassador program is going to really bump up the quality experience that people use this trail. I can tell you that that idea is so exciting to some folks. On down the trail, Hamilton would like to see the same program start down there. So, we're working with them, too, and we're working with Fairfield to help extend that trail down closer to the county boundary on the south end. And yes, there are gaps in this trail system, and the biggest gaps there are are right here in Butler County. One on the north end of the Middletown segment between that and Franklin, and another big segment between Lemon Township down on the south end and Middletown segment and down to Rensselaer Forest Metro Park. And I had a meeting recently with Monroe, talking about how we could start filling in those gaps. Don't hold your breath, it'll take some dollars and some time, but out of the 90-mile trail corridor that is there, that starts up north of Dayton, Butler County has the biggest gaps. And what does that mean? That means those people who would actually ride that trail for a day or a multi-day excursion aren't getting here, and we don't get their economic impact. Might say, oh, people don't do that. Well, I did it when I lived in northern Ohio. I came down several weekends and rode the Little Miami Scenic Trail over on the Little Miami there, because kids continue us. It goes all the way, and all kinds of old businesses that popped up along it that catered to the services that visitors need. I think some hotels and hotels and ruckus has gotten some significant dollars out of my pocket when I was doing that, too. All a great experience, but we're missing out because we still have gaps. We're going to work to close those gaps in the coming years. We also got a recent partnership with...who has gotten a sponsorship. We'll have actually the capacity to take refreshments and water out onto the path for certain functions and meet people while they're at a program or on a trail with a golf cart. So, how do we do these things? Well, somebody's got to pay the cost of operating, and we exist on a tax levy county-wide. It's a six-year levy. It is about to expire at the end of this year. So, on March 15th, you'll have the opportunity to decide whether or not you're getting value out of the metro park system for about seven, well, slightly less than seven cents a day for $100,000 of taxable value, property value. You can invest one more time in the metro park system for another six years. What does that levy do? There's our revenue sources. 73% of our ability to operate the park system comes from that levy. And you might note that we get a little bit of money from the state for capital improvements. We get a little bit of money from local government funds, but I think all of you are aware that local political subdivisions have gotten about half of what they used to get from state support in that source. We're in the same boat, and we generate from fees and charges about 15% of our operating costs, which I understand is twice the average for park districts across the state. Where do we spend it? On parks and trails? Well, capital improvements get spent. A lot of those dollars aren't from our budget. We leverage those from partners, sponsors, grants, outside sources, and operational expenses and repairs and replacements of old infrastructure is a good portion of how and what we spend dollars on in the metro parks. And we'll tell you that in the case of the trail, closing those gaps is a major capital improvement, and we know that this levy by itself won't pay for all the capital improvements that we could possibly come up with to approve parks and trails in this county. But we are able to take small amounts of that levy and take it and use those small amounts to leverage dollars from outside sources. One year, 2014, we did a record job with that and got about $7.2 million pledged from outside sources, which is almost twice, no, it is more than twice, our levy revenue in that year. Can't count on that all the time, but we're working on it every day. How do we do it? Besides partnering with Middletown itself, as we have on the trail and some other things like the Community Center Garden, we have all these partners. Sometimes it's just in-kind partnerships, occasionally it's dollars in cooperative management. All of these different organizations, units of government and nonprofits. Okay, run through, and I think we have one exciting video. Oh, I mentioned that. Leveraged, it was actually $7.6 million in 2014. I'm underselling my organization. I'm going to have to, I'm going to hear all about it from my board. Capital improvements, those are generally where we spend money we leverage. It's tough to get anybody to contribute dollars to mow the grass, to pay the power bill, and to clean the parks, but capital improvements are where you can get dollars from outside sources. So, maybe I can do a short video. I have to admit, my audiovisual certificate does not qualify me from 1977 to operate these visual devices. My recognize Seagull Park, which the city of the metro parks handed off to the city here. Metro Parks of Butler County. How that's family fun. And that's my presentation. So, any questions? Anything I can do to answer any unusual things other than the rules of quidditch? Because I can't, I just am mystified that they do that, but it looked like fun.
Do you have any idea how many people actually use the bikeway that runs through Middletown?
You know, that's a very good question, and without having a presence of our building where we can put a counter and keep it under surveillance, no, I don't, but we will. In fact, we're trying to gather better data about who comes and uses the parks. Obviously, we do have a motor vehicle permit system where we know how many people and residents get a motor vehicle permit free. That's part of our ongoing pledge. If you're a visitor and you want to come into our gated parks, you will have to buy a motor vehicle pass daily or a visitor from outside the county, I should say. Even then, it's only $10 a year. But no, good question. We will get better data.
Any other questions, Mr. Granville?
All right. Thank you. Certainly appreciate the updates and good things going on.
All right, well, I hope to see you at Horse Days coming up this fall out at Seagull Park, and if you have grandchildren or children... My recognized Seagull Park, which the city of the Metro Parks handed off, the city had a, uh, a, uh...
Metro Parks of Butler County, how that's family fun!
And that's my presentation. So, any questions? Can I, anything I can do to, uh, answer any, uh, unusual things other than the rules of quidditch? Because I can't, I just am mystified that they do that, but it looked like fun.
Do you have any idea how many people actually use the bike way that runs through Middletown?
You know, that's a very good question, and, uh, without having a presence of our building where we can put a counter and keep it under surveillance, no, I don't. But we will. In fact, we're trying to gather better data about who comes and uses the parks. Uh, obviously, we do have a motor vehicle permit, uh, system where we know how many people, uh, and residents get a motor vehicle permit free, and that's part of our ongoing pledge. If you're a visitor and you want to come into our gated parks, you will have to buy a motor vehicle pass, uh, daily, or, or a visitor from outside the county, I should say. Uh, even then, it's only $10 a year. But, no, good question, we will get better data.
Any other questions, Mr. Granville? All right. Thank you, certainly appreciate the updates.
All right, well, I hope you, uh, at Horse Days, uh, coming up this fall, out at Seagull Park, and if you have grandchildren or children, they'll love the riding experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add to that just a little bit, uh, Mr. Granville and I are working, uh, with the Law Department. We have Bicentennial Commons, uh, in that area that we will be working with Butler Metro Parks. Uh, there is an easement in place, and I won't get into all the legal, uh, finigling that has to be done to make that available. I have met with AK, we have met with the Bicentennial Commons Committee, uh, we've talked to Park Board, we've gotten their input. Uh, at some point, there will be an agreement coming with you to, for your consideration, uh, that will hand that off, the, the management of that off to Butler Metro Parks, that we will preserve all of the historical things that have happened in Bicentennial Commons, the bricks, the timeline, all that stuff will be preserved as part of the agreement, uh, and that will be coming when it's worked out for your future consideration.
Go ahead, please.
One of the things that came up as we were preparing for this meeting was there's appeared to be a number of questions in the community about how our CRA program worked. So I wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about that program. The community reinvestment areas are areas in, of land in which property owners can receive tax incentives for investing in real property improvements. Uh, municipalities can designate areas where investment has been discouraged as a CRA to encourage revitalization of existing housing stock, excuse me, or the redevelopment of underutilized commercial structures. City Council determines the size, the number of CRA areas, as well as determine extent of any real property exemptions that are offered. All property owners within the CRA area, meeting the requirements, can apply for the abatements. A Tax Incentive Review Council reviews performance on all agreements that are made between the city and economic development prospects. CRA program is a valuable economic development tool for areas of significant disinvestment similar to downtown. I won't read that whole chart to you. The important one for the, one we're looking at with Liberty Spirits is the commercial and industrial remodeling. Uh, it allows up to 12 years as negotiated and approved in a CRA agreement, uh, of abatement, property tax abatements on the improvements made to the, uh, facility. Go ahead, please. Uh, 2010 is when we enacted our CRA for the downtown area. Uh, that created the, uh, exemptions and also the boundaries for our CRA. It's been in place for the last six years. We are now starting to see investment in the downtown abandoned buildings. The CRA is also part of the agreement that we negotiated last year with the school district. The school district believes, as we do, uh, that only by supplying these types of incentives can older, historical, uh, but poorly maintained buildings be brought back into productive use with new business. Go ahead, please. The map up on your screen, uh, shows the various districts that we have in place downtown. Uh, the yellow is the CRA district. Any property within that district that qualifies can apply for the property tax abatements. Again, those are for the improvements only that are taking place, not the original value of the building as it stands. Uh, the blue is the designated outdoor refreshment area, which we hope to see in full swing this spring. Uh, and the green is the entertainment district. And I'd want to take just a couple minutes to talk about the actual two buildings under consideration with Liberty Spirits. Uh, 1316 Vale was last occupied in July 2010. Building has no plumbing, electric, or HVAC, and it has been exposed to the elements through a hole in the roof, uh, for the last three or four years. Liberty Spirits is willing to take the Vale property for a dollar. They will be responsible for all property taxes on that building, and for any income tax generated from the resale store location proposed for that, uh, facility. 1316 Vale, if we move forward, must be completed by December 13th, just, excuse me, December 31st of this year, where there is a reverter clause that returns the property back to the city. Uh, we would be out at that time, only the 10 months, uh, that we could have marketed that property, uh, reminding you again that no one in the last six years has had any interest in even looking at that property. Uh, the CRA agreement with Liberty Spirits for the property on Central Avenue, that property last had active water service in 2007, nine years ago, and this is exactly the type of building that the CRA was designed for. Liberty Spirits agreement is consistent, again, with the 2010 enacting legislation, and also with the agreement negotiated with the school district last year. Liberty Spirits will pay property taxes on the original value of the building as it was purchased, and all income taxes generated from the $80,000 in estimated annual payroll, uh, from the distillery operation. Uh, the construction for this property on Central must be completed 122 days from tonight. To receive the abatement, if this construction is not a complete, the abatement lapses, and the city is out nothing for that agreement. The 10-year property tax abatement is only for the new investment, uh, the improvements only will be abated. We have estimated that and sent that out to council yesterday, is the improvements are, uh, estimated to be about $650 in property taxes over the 10 years, that would be 600, oh, excuse me, $6,500 in abatements. Uh, Liberty Spirits will continue to pay property taxes on the present value of the building, which is currently $908.42 per year. That's taken from the auditor's webpage. They will pay that for the 10 years, for a total of just over $9,000. The city and the school district will get their normal share of that $9,000, uh, as set up by state law. We would then net $12,810 in income tax, uh, under the $80,000 payroll per year that has been estimated for this project, less payment to the schools under our agreement with the school district, for a net revenue of $11,620. If you take the $11,620 in revenues, take off the abatements, theoretically the city is up $5,120 for this CRA deal, plus our normal portion of the existing property taxes, and theoretically we have two new operating businesses and two older dilapidated buildings. And again, we have the Turk, the Tax Incentive Review Council in place to verify compliance with this agreement each year. So, wanted to go over that, make sure that the public was aware of what we were contemplating, and why we thought it was a good idea, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Atkins, on the CRA stuff, what he has in materials, Andy? All right, with that, we can move over to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council Minutes from February 16th, 2016, to confirm the promotional appointments of Brett Hughes and John Fadden, Fire Apparatus Operator, Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, to receive and file Ose of Office for Stephen Bosom, Adam Cox, Jennifer Eke, Jeffrey Green, and Ryan Sadel, to approve the purchase of 80 pieces of body armor and related accessories for the Division of Police from Vance Outdoors of Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $55,680 off the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, to authorize the purchase of approximately 800 water meters from Badger Meter Incorporated of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in the amount of $67.50 each, and to approve a contract with various vendors for the purchase of supplies for the Water Maintenance Division. Section 1 Brass from Ferguson Waterworks, Hamilton, Ohio, $14,908.85. Section 2 Repair Clamps, Ferguson Waterworks, Hamilton, Ohio, $14,670. Section 3 Valve Boxes and Sleeves from EJP Incorporated, West Carrollton, Ohio, for $23,458.48. Section 4 Gate Vows from Fortline, Cincinnati, Ohio, for $6,684.82. Section 5 for Sewer Rings and Lids, Fortline, Cincinnati, Ohio, $8,780.80. Section 6 Miscellaneous Supplies, Fortline, Cincinnati, Ohio, $2,501.28.
All right, thank you. Do we have a, uh, motion for the approval of the issues and actions that's listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, Ms. Gank, fill her role, please.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, bring us to our council comments. Start the seat with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to echo your comments to start the meeting. Um, I know yesterday is gonna be a day that has changed all of us probably forever. Um, we all have family and friends in Madison, uh, they're certainly in, in my thoughts and prayers. Had the opportunity to, uh, attend my first heroine summit this week. I want to thank the city manager for all his work there, city staff, the community. It's, uh, certainly something that needs to be tackled, and I thank you for putting in the time and the effort. Uh, we also got the opportunity to go to Arlington Point for the ribbon cutting, a 99-bed, uh, retirement community, uh, here in Middletown. Would like to thank Steve Boymel, the owner of that, for investing in Middletown. Those are just the type of jobs, uh, that we need to be drawing to town. And then finally, I just want to thank the, the police and fire departments for responding so quickly to the chemical spill at Amanda Elementary two weeks ago. Uh, that was, uh, just a top-notch response.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to pass on my thoughts and prayers for the citizens of Madison Township. Um, what I attended this, uh, past week was the, uh, Sam Ashworth at the Historical Society had a presentation on, uh, how Middletown was involved after World War II, and the atomic energy and atomic bomb issues and things. It was quite interesting, I was quite, it was quite informative, so I just wanted to pass on that, and thank you.
Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to pass line my sympathies and prayers to all of those who were harmed by the incident in Madison Township yesterday. I'd also like to praise the first responders for the outstanding job which they did. Uh, from all reports, obviously, things went extremely well given the circumstances. I'd also like to thank the, uh, school board and the school representatives for the township. It appears that they had their ducks in a row, and they reacted correctly and promptly, and helped move things along well. And I'd also, lastly, like to commend the parents, uh, although it was a terrible situation, and they all rushed to look out for their loved ones and so on, it was very orderly, and, uh, they responded well, and took instructions well. So to everyone involved, um, who assisted in this event, congratulations for a job well done. To those who were harmed, I wish you the best.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my sentiments also, uh, with the activities, uh, happening yesterday, I did go to Middletown High School, um, just as our officer was stationed there, and, uh, uh, the officers were patting down people and, uh, making sure that there was no confusion, and no one to leave the building, and, uh, they did a great job, uh, even there at Middletown High School. Uh, I went to the installation for the new pastor at First Presbyterian, uh, and I welcomed Mr. Michael Isaacs to our city. And, uh, they are hosting tomorrow night a vigil for yesterday's incident, uh, from 6:30 till 7 o'clock. Uh, they're coordinating their efforts with the ministerial alliance and other, uh, church facilities in the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, I also attended the ribbon cuttings, uh, Arlington Place and Flores Leather. Uh, I did attend the annual meeting for DMI. A lot of great things are going on in town. Uh, I went to the skating, um, fundraiser for the Flint Water, uh, supply that's gonna be, uh, taken up there in a, a truck, and, uh, last night I skated with the kids and had fun. So, um, uh, those are the things that I've attended. Uh, wanted to say that First Friday is this Friday, and I'm sure the mayor will mention something about that, but we have the Middletown Symphony coming up on March 13th, and I like to give those announcements because there are so many things going on in Middletown. And we have early voting for the primaries, and hopefully everybody is, uh, has their mindset on getting out to vote like our guest said tonight. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I'll follow that up, uh, certainly speaking about the primary coming up on March 15th. Uh, certainly a lot of important issues on there. Addition to our parks levy, there's a mental health that levy that should be carefully considered, as, uh, folks, uh, look forward to that, and a lot of, uh, important ballot races going on in, uh, the Republican and Democratic primaries. Uh, so certainly an important part of the process, and encourage everyone to take part in, uh, in voting. It's not just on the general elections, it's on the primaries, it's important too. Uh, had a chance, uh, last evening to participate in, um, a couple events. Uh, first I want to commend Lamar Farrell, one of our, uh, police chaplains, and, uh, Baraka Baptist, and a number of other churches, I think Bril Church was involved too. Uh, they put together a, uh, rather ad hoc vigil out at the high school, uh, to pray for and, and remember, um, uh, our friends over in, in Madison Township. Uh, had a good, very good turnout, and certainly appreciate, uh, his efforts in leading that. I think that's the first step, uh, towards, uh, healing and understanding, and, uh, he did a very good job in, in facilitating that. Uh, following that, we had the What If Middletown Visioning, um, session that was put on by, uh, CBI and Middletown Moving Forward. And again, uh, there were probably six or eight groups there, uh, focusing on a number of different areas, uh, very encouraged by, uh, by the process. This is something that's been going on for a while here in Middletown in terms of getting the input, uh, something we modeled after Greenville. We brought that back, uh, a couple years ago, and I'm really pleased to see this moving forward. A lot of work's gone into that, and I appreciate, uh, both what Kalista Smith from Middletown Moving Forward, as well as Karen Maney from, uh, CBI have done to, to help move this forward and, uh, bring a vision together. Uh, it's really important, I think, for us as a community to come together around these things. It's, uh, you know, not, uh, the five of us on council or, or Doug's vision, it really allows us to get the community input and help us prioritize, uh, some very important issues. Um, as has been mentioned, we have a lot of great things happening here in Middletown with, uh, First Friday and the symphonies and a number of different community events, so, uh, certainly glad to see those, uh, continuing and, and happening. Uh, certainly appreciate all the work that volunteers do to make that happen, uh, you know, day in and day out here in, in Middletown. And that's, uh, all I have, and we can move to Mr. Cantwell for our legislation for this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items for legislation this evening, the first of which is, uh, set as, as an emergency. Ordinance number O201604, ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract for the transfer of city-owned property located at 1316 Vale Street to Liberty Spirits LLC for redevelopment, declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
Some of it.
Excuse me, point of order, don't we need a motion to...
Yeah, well, I want to see if we want to adopt this first before we do the emergency, because this is one we were talking about possibly tabling, so...
So enlighten the rest of us as to your plan.
Well, um, we've, we've got the reading, so, um, if we're gonna take a motion on it, we'll do that, then we'll do the emergency waiver, if we want to move forward, was what I was, what I was thinking, so...
Okay.
So we've got a motion to, to adopt.
Second.
We have second, okay. Um, now then, since it is an emergency, we want to take action on that, I'll need a, uh, motion waiving the charter provision requiring, uh, two separate readings.
Uh, I make a motion to waive the charter that requires two readings on two separate days, and consider ordinance number O2016-04 an emergency to be read one time only.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, should call the roll on the emergency, uh...
Yes.
Variance, thank you.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
All right, now we have our motion or second for the ordinance, um, regarding the, uh, contract for the transfer of city-owned property. Uh, Mr. Atkins, any additional information?
Yes, Your Honor, I received a message from a couple council members, and I'll leave it entirely up to you. Um, we have, uh, talked to Mr. Robinett, he's out of town in Chicago right now. He would be available at the March 15th meeting. There was a, uh, suggestion by at least one council person that we table this matter and, and consider both at the March 15th meeting, uh, and I'll leave it up to council for their determination on how they'd like to proceed tonight.
Doug, I had some questions, uh, Mr. Atkins, sorry. Uh, I had some questions, uh, that I wanted to ask directly to Mr. Robinett, and for him to present, um, his plan, and I know we have it listed here in all of our paperwork, but I would, uh, prefer personally that he would come and give us some kind of a presentation. That, that was my email.
Again, it's totally at council's discretion whether they want to move it or table it till the next meeting, uh, or vote it down, of course, whatever is council's pleasure.
Is Mr. Robinett gonna be interested in this property if we don't do item number three?
I would want to ask him for sure, but my understanding is no, that if, if he's not gonna, if he's not gonna get the CRA abatement, I'm not sure he will stay on this property on Central. He may look at other options and other locations for that property. If he doesn't do his distiller around Central, I do, I don't believe he's going to want the property unveiled. Now, again, I'm not entirely sure. That would be something that we would want to ask him on the 15th if you're gonna go...
And item number three tonight is only the first reading, so we're not voting on that.
That's correct, Your Honor, yes.
Could you talk about the abatement figures, uh, that you emailed to us?
I did during city manager reports. Do you want me to go through them again?
Yeah, just kind of talk a little bit about that, and unless we, um, we all heard that, were there any more questions on the abatement itself? The, the one thing that I heard, uh, that seemed to resonate was that we weren't able to, uh, have input into the amount of abatement. That, that's basically what I was hearing, um, unless someone has some...
I just have a comment. It, it would address both issues one and three tonight. Um, I think we've all received phone calls or emails or, or messages on this, and, and there's, there is a, a level of concern out there in the public, and I certainly share their le- some of their concern. Um, I'm a proponent of small business, I'm a small business owner here in town, um, and I think there's certainly instances where it's wise and necessary to incentivize business to come to town. The sale of the building for a dollar meets that qualification, as does the 100% tax abatement. Um, I do have some reservations about both giving the building... the 100% tax abatement. I do have some reservations about both giving the building away and doing 100% abatement.
I guess my comment to that would be there's two separate buildings, two separate uses. And if Mike wanted to come with a third business and a fourth business and continue to renovate buildings, as long as he meets his obligations, I personally have no problem doing that as long, again, these are old buildings that have no HVAC, no plumbing. If he's willing to invest that, even if he goes out of business, that building now is renovated, ready for use in future. And it's at a place now where it cannot be used until somebody spends that money. So we would, as staff, we would advocate that we move forward on this. But I do understand your concerns and the concerns you've received in the public.
I would like to have him come before us, because I would really like to find out, because it appears that this may be his first big venture that he's taking on himself. I know his investors that he had from Middletown have backed out. He had some Middletown people that were willing to get put up some money and they backed out of the agreement. I know he backed out of the agreement that he had with, working with the other two projects that he was involved in. So there's just a little bit of stuff there that I just really want to get some assurances from him on camera that he's willing to do this and not to, you know, it's all well and good that we've got a cutoff date if it's not done, we get it back. But then that's another black eye in our, you know, another project that we gave away and it's back in our lap again. And that's what I don't think the system...
And I do understand that. These are very risky projects. I mean, when you get into Guest Tower and the Manchester Inn and the Sunshine Building, again, these are buildings that, but for somebody putting a ton of money in for an untested business, that project doesn't move forward. And these are the types of things that other cities, Hamilton is doing very well and has been doing for a number of years. That's one of the reasons we're behind them, is that they had braced this much earlier and they've taken these things forward and they've seen a huge amount. That's one of the reasons they got Star Trek and all those call center jobs, is they were ready to take them and we were not. So again, these are those types of things as a policy matter, the council will have to decide, are they willing to move forward on those things?
You know, as an investor myself, and, you know, spent a lot of money myself, what I'm concerned about is the fact that, you know, when I've purchased properties and renovated and things like that and go to the bank for the money, they want to make sure that I've got enough equity behind me to be able to cover and protect the bank's interest. In this particular case, I would like to know that he's got the money available somewhere, somehow. You know, one of those things where, oh yeah, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this. If I can get this grant and that grant and this, that and this, you know, and he's not out anything to go into it. I want, you know, when I buy property, I have to have something behind me showing that I can cover my debt. So that's what I want to find out is, you know, you're telling us you were going to do all this stuff, but show us that you've got the capital to be able to do some of it upfront. Yeah, granted, you're not going to have 100% of it, because you're going to try to go out and get it. That's what I want to find out.
Happy to have him do that. I think those are legitimate questions. I tell you, it helps if you don't sandbag him on council night. In other words, if you have questions, I would, it would help us to get them early. The things like, how much capital do you have? Again, in a freight where he's not giving away his trade secrets and his bank account, but he can get you the assurances you need, it would help if council would send those to me ahead of time in enough of a form that he can be prepared to answer your questions on the 15th.
If, I mean, I, with all due respect, Mr. Bohannon, I disagree. You know, Mr. Robinett's been involved in some projects and some projects have fallen through, and I understand that. And you're providing us information tonight that isn't verified by anybody in terms of investors who have left him or whatever the situation may be. But I don't believe that we as a council should be inquiring as to his financial wherewithal or anything else. You know, and the best example I can give you of that is last year or the year before when we dealt with the person who was going to do the Manchester Inn. He was on the screen telling us how much money he had and that he didn't need to get any money from anybody else to do anything else and that he was ready to go. And so he would have answered your questions by saying, I'm rich and I can afford to do everything I possibly can. And that's what he would have told us. Turned out he wasn't, and it didn't happen. But I don't think this council should be getting into banking or determining credit risks of people who are coming before us. If this project was brought to us, it was vetted by staff, you know, we had authorized the city manager to move ahead with this project, and I think we should move ahead with it. I don't, I'm not in favor of bringing him here to grill him about where he's going or what he's going to do. He can stand up there and basically tell us anything he wants to tell us. And we're not in a position to say, no, Mr. Robinett, that's really not the case. I've checked and you really don't have this, and so we're going to cut this deal off. And I don't think that we've ever gotten into that situation where we're trying to determine whether or not a potential investor actually has the wherewithal to do it. I mean, staff does a great job of vetting these projects and looking into the situation. This is, these are properties that, as Mr. Atkins has pointed out to us, have been vacant for a significant period of time, and nothing's happened. No one's stepped forward. And frankly, as I said in my email this morning to all of you, you know, the people who don't want this to happen are people who have a grudge or some, something to hold against Mr. Robinett, and so they don't want him to be involved, or they're jealous. And I got a call from somebody last week, and I spoke to this gentleman for at least half an hour, and that's really all it was. He's jealous of the fact that Mr. Robinett's getting a great deal. Well, I'll tell you what, folks, Mr. Atkins is putting together a list of all the properties that the city has. If you've got a deal, you want to do something, step forward. Bring us your project. We'll be glad to consider it. We'll probably be willing to make you a deal where you get a building for a buck too. But if you're just going to be out there throwing stones at things and you're not going to step up and put your own money up on the line and to do something, I'm sorry, I'm not willing to listen to you. You know, you've got to have some cash in the deal here. You've got to have some stake involved in it. Just to be standing out there complaining about a project and making accusations about a project, I'm sorry, I don't have time to listen to you for that.
Ms. Bronson, go ahead.
That's okay, Mayor. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask if Mr. Atkins could maybe speak to the vetting process and kind of the background, the development of this from the staff side with...
Economic development did vet him, and he's getting some incentives from the state. The state also vetted his ability to purchase his, I know his equipment's on order. Mr. Bohannon said we can always cancel. Well, that's true, but there's a point where, you know, he could get it delivered and send it back, and I don't have any control over that. The state was, had vetted him enough financially to give them some benefits to his project. The equipment is on order. Again, could that all fall through? Of course it can. And that's why we tried to put the teeth in there that, you know, if he didn't develop the Vale property by December, we'd get it back. And if he doesn't have the construction down on Central in 122 days, he gets no benefit from us for doing so. The other piece of this is we've talked about, you know, his past projects. I talked at this retreat about Guest Tower. The reason Guest Tower isn't going forward is because there's a $700,000 gap between what the bank will finance and the money that's available with the CRA agreement that we have in place and with the Ohio, and with historical tax credits. So, you know, that project ain't going through with anybody, Mr. Robinett or anybody else, until somebody finds a way to close that gap. And council has authorized me to start looking on ways to do that. So, again, I can't give Mr. Robinett credit and I can't give him fault for that project. There's a gap there and it's a, almost three quarters of a million dollar gap that no one has solved, and that project can't go forward until it is. Rose Furniture was a property that has been, I mean, there's blame everywhere on that property. I wish we hadn't taken it back when we did. We had two structural engineers state that it was near collapse. The historic commission said we couldn't tear it down. And at the last minute, Mr. Robinett and a group came together and said, if you'll give us that building and the money you were going to use for construction, we might be able to do something with it. And that's what our agreement with Mr. Robinett says. It doesn't have a timeframe. It doesn't require him to do anything. And in the end, that project again has been demolished finally. Took way too long. It is, that's true. He didn't have a timeframe in that agreement. That thing has been demolished. It has been stabilized up. We are now, again, through the retreat, at a place working towards getting that development going again, working with a group out of the Rhine to try to get that gone. And so, again, I, you may like or not like Mr. Robinett, but he has actually met the very wide agreement that he had with us on Rose Furniture. And there's a financial gap that is in the Guest Tower. Like I said, I don't support him. I don't talk fat about him. Our deal was that these seem to make sense. The buildings were in horrible shape. It's a chance to theoretically get two businesses underway. And you, I would expect many of these to go forward, and then some of them will fail. I mean, these are the, again, these old, old buildings that have not been maintained over the last 10 or 15 years. If you don't like a particular deal, I understand that completely. But these are high-risk projects, and if we do five of them, my guess is two or three of them, as they go further along, won't turn out to be viable. But you continue to work, you continue, you get three of the five going, then you go back and you work on the next two, and you do three, you know, five more. And again, three of them work and more of your downtown develops over and over. That's why we have that big open yellow area that we had going. This is the style of things that have worked in South Carolina, that's worked in over the Rhine, that's worked in Newport on the levee, Hamilton. These are the types of things that other communities are doing that have worked well, which is why we were trying to get it going here. And so, again, I'm not getting into the particulars of this particular project or the person going forward. But these are the style of things we're going to have to do if we want to continue to see development go downtown. As it creeps down towards university, it's going to take us being willing to go out for people that seem to have a viable plan in areas where we can make sense. And we will evaluate each one. You know, the Vale building, giving it to a dollar because we owned it made sense. The one that he bought, he's going to pay property taxes on. The improvements made sense on that one. So we try to, again, learn from what we've done in the past, make smart agreements, put tight timelines on them, hold them accountable, look at them each year with the Turk, the Tax and Centered Review Council. And that's as far as staff can go at that point. Again, some of these will go forward, some of these will not. And half of all businesses fail. Let's be honest. This may get open, go for three years, and he still may go under. But that's the nature of business and the business cycle. And we do the best we can as your staff and your economic development department to move these things forward and to continue the development of downtown.
Can I make a final comment, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
I listen to everyone, and we should have the opportunity to speak our opinions. I thought that this would be a good time for us to set up some kind of a process where maybe council could see the information before it becomes on the agenda, before it becomes an agenda item. And then if there are things to pull apart, maybe we could do that before you put it on here. Because we did give you permission to look at this, put staff time together, pull this together. The concerns that were raised were things like, we didn't know it was 100% tax abatement for 10 years. We could have taken care of that prior to the information coming on the docket. If anyone else is interested in the property, they have time until we see Mr. Robinett on the 15th. Maybe they should call you if they're interested. If not, I think I'd be ready to proceed on the 15th. So I enjoyed the discussion. We needed the information. It's very pertinent. We're making decisions here, and we need the information to satisfy our curiosity. And so I think that it did that for me.
My only concern is, you know, I've got staff out working, and as people approach us on these deals, again, one of the things we've learned is business moves at a very quick pace.
I understand.
And, you know, if we're going to have to wait until the next council meeting or send out emails and try it again, you're getting into the negotiating process. I'd rather you just say, only go up to here, and so that we know where we can go. Because when you start tying our hands and we don't know if it's okay here, but it's not okay here. Puts us in a very awkward spot. Also puts our business prospect up here on the spot. There may be people that, you know, you give too much of a hard time, will go, they're in a point that, you know, if Atkins can't negotiate anything because council may not pass it, and if you got to go up here and get grilled on TV, never mind, we'll go to Hamilton. And so we have to find that balance of making sure that we get you everything you need and answer your concerns, but also, again, allow staff to run at full steam so we can do the best job we can for you. And again, business friendly. That's what we, that's everything I've tried to do since I've been here, is work towards being business friendly. So again, I'm happy to discuss it as much as we need to, but the more room you can give us to know where that, those boundaries are, that helps us move forward at the best possible speed and know that as we move it forward that we can expect passage.
If I may, I, I'm sorry, I have to make a comment. We need to remember where we are. We're council members. And for us to start to insert ourselves into the negotiating process is someplace we ought not be. You know, just as I, as everybody knows, I'd love to be able to drive a snowplow, but I can't do that. I'm on council. I make decisions about policy and I set legislation. Council's not to be involved in negotiation of deals. We're not supposed to be involved in getting into the grassroots of these things. That's why we have Mr. Atkins. And I agree with what he has said, that we need to set parameters for him, say this deal has to fall within this and that, and let him negotiate them. But if we're going to insert ourselves into negotiating those deals, that number one, that's not what we were elected to do. And number two, no one's going to come here. They're not going to want to negotiate with all five of us, calling all five of us and making us or telling us this or that and trying to influence the deal. I think we need to stay above that fray, let Mr. Atkins do his job, let staff do its job, and bring us a deal, and then we can vote up or down and move forward.
And I certainly appreciate some of the thoughts and concerns. And a similar parallel that kind of struck me, I did put in my email from yesterday, but, you know, we get through a lot of this as we've looked at other vacant property sales as council. I mean, we've had a number of those over the time. You know, those are ones we don't put out for bid either. And those are just as, you know, valuable and potentially, you know, value creating as this may be. You know, may not be a business. It's certainly not Mr. Robinett. It's property owners that are, you know, next to. But, you know, I think we've got a precedent where, as Mr. Picard was saying, there's really no need for council to go in and say, we need to micromanage this and do it. But we would rather set the policy and say, you know, yes, we want to, you know, where we can, get out of, you know, the excess real estate that we have, make sure we're, you know, it's fitting within the policy and plans for the area. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do something that's counter to what we've got in the master plan or the downtown plan. And I've gathered there's been a lot of interest and support in this from the broader community in terms of seeing ongoing redevelopment downtown. And this helps grow that area, you know, outside the core that we've got right now at Broad and Central, further up Central Avenue, and can hopefully spur some other development. Because we've seen that, you know, I think the probably the best model we've had is with, you know, Bovier Reardon. When they moved there, they bought up, you know, essentially a dilapidated building that was ready to, you know, be torn down. I mean, I think that was part of the similar one as Rose. I mean, it could have very easily collapsed, you know, along, as Rose did. But this one worked out where we, you know, we had some engaged owners. And this could be something where we have a, you know, precedent to move forward and be able to stick to this and, you know, really drive forward. So I'm comfortable moving forward. I guess the one question I have from Mr. Atkins regarding, just to follow up on the abatement side, we kind of covered some of this in the presentation, but just so we're clear, the abatments Mr. Robinett or Liberty Spirits is getting, those are not outside any of the parameters we've established. It's all part of the established policy and ordinance.
Correct, Your Honor. It's consistent both with the school agreement and with the passage of the CRA agreement in 2010.
So anyone that came to us with a similar project or even a different project would be eligible to get those.
Correct.
And we'd be supportive of that from a staff and state perspective then.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
On the CRA agreement, does it have to be 100% or could it be, is that up to staff or council to choose what percentage of abatement there might be?
Normally, staff would be negotiating, again, based on the value of the improvements, based on, again, what we think it's going to take to get there. The answer is how much in economic development and same as you want to get, just enough to get the deal done. And the problem is sometimes, you know, that's a moving target and guessing where that is. Again, this is a cement block building with very little infrastructure. He's going to put 50 grand into it. Your total abatement, if he does everything right over 10 years, is $6,500. And we did not think that was a huge amount of money. And again, if he doesn't get it done in 122 days, he doesn't get anything. And he continues to pay the $908 on the value that the property is bought right now. So, again, it did not look to us like that was a outrageous deal to move forward.
I'll just make one other comment, and then I'll let council work as well. I think we all want to see the investment in downtown Middletown. I think we all would like to see the project move forward. Speaking specifically just to the abatments, I don't know if there's an opportunity to see if we can negotiate lower abatement. I know I'm second guessing what you guys have put into it. I just want to make sure we're driving the best deal that we can get.
I would ask you to consider passing the deal that we've done on this one, if you want to look at other ones. Again, we can get into a policy discussion of where those parameters should be. I would tell you again that Hamilton and other communities would be happy to give 100% abatements and take that from Middletown. They'd be happy to have that. And so, again, one of the reasons we've been behind other communities is they've been using all the tools in their toolbox for a long time, and we have not. So it's, I, again, follow the will of council.
Okay. Well, before I call for the vote for this, let me just understand where we are and see if this might be a equitable compromise. Because the first ordinance really just authorizes a contract, allows the city manager to engage in a contract. If we move forward that and give Doug the flexibility he needs, I think we could probably still have Mr. Robinett come and provide an update. And I think that would probably address, hopefully address some of the concerns raised and have that presentation. Would council be agreeable to some along those lines to keep this moving? And yet still hear from Mr. Robinett, because I think... Because I think we need to understand that, I think, for the third resolution we have for tonight with, on the CRA side for the Central Avenue building, and that probably needs to be by emergency on the 15th, too, right? So that
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The third resolution, the third legislation needs to be emergency on the 15th, right? Is that we're, to keep that moving forward for his
I would prefer if council would, if we're going to back off the other, if we could consider doing both as emergencies, so Mr. Robinett knows where he stands and can move forward on both projects.
Well, I was hoping to get the first one by emergency tonight.
Okay.
Still have Mr. Robinett come for the third one on the 15th, because, I mean, it's all interrelated, I mean, it needs to happen, so I don't know that, you know, passing one doesn't, I don't know that locks us into it anymore than the other does if council's kind of agreeable to that.
I would say this, if you get to number three on the 15th and that deal for some reason falls apart, we just won't execute
The agreement, right?
The transfer of the property on the 15th.
Okay. Would that be agreeable to council, to keep things moving forward? I think we certainly had a good discussion on that. Any reservations, I guess, to put it that way?
I'm just a little concerned that, you know, I'm not trying to micromanage anything, I just looking at it from, I'm in that business, I know how stringent that business is when I try to buy property and stuff, and the hoops that I have to jump through and things, and it's, it's just, you know, we gave $90,000 to move those folks out of that building back in the day and move them over to the Antique Center. We've put money into that property, a lot of money, of citizens' money into that, and it's all, I'm just concerned about the citizens' money that we've spent on this thing, on a speculation from someone that has not proven to me that he can follow through on a project. Now, granted, everybody deserves a first chance to try something. I just don't want to see this coming back and biting us in the tail, that we end up getting this property back again, and then the citizens say, what is the city of Middletown doing in giving away property when they, you know, and it just snowballs into that. So it's just a persona that I just don't want to see us, as a council, start getting into, that people can't trust us to do anything because everything we touch, it just comes back costs. So that's what I think about. Understand?
Yeah, I think that's certainly a fair concern, Mr. Bohannon, there's no doubt, I think we need to proceed cautiously with that. I think it's also, you know, prudent to, you know, be able to move with that, and it does show, as Mr. Atkins mentioned, a business-friendly approach to try to make these things happen and be nimble on our feet. As you know, proper negotiations, if you've got to wait two weeks to hear back from somebody, you know, that can
You know, I want this to work. I want it to work for everybody, for Mr. Robinett, for the city, for everybody, and I'm not going to stop it from doing that. I just want to make it clear that I, you know, I'm voicing some concerns, and I don't want it to backwash onto us and make us look like idiots.
Well, again, I think that's an opportunity we'd have on the 15th where we can have a discussion with Mr. Robinett, you know, regarding this, and, I mean, I understand Mr. Picard's concerns of, I think we should be careful in terms of the questions. I mean, it's not a cross-examination in court of law by any means, but I think he can certainly share with us his vision and some of his plans to assure the public and assure us as kind of decision-making
That's all I want, is just for him to be on
We need to have that, so I think that would be a reasonable compromise if we could all agree to that.
Yeah.
All right, with that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll on 2016-04, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, and item two, thank you, Your Honor, Mr. Camwell.
Ordinance number O 2016-05, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Buick GMC of Beechwood for the purchase of a GMC Sierra 15 automobile.